All right, I'm going to call the meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. It's Monday, December 7th. And present at the meeting, as of now, myself, Fred Gilmetti, Robert Keeman, Stephen Cacciatore, Richard Blaws for the board, Secretary Carol O'Brien, Robert Curran, the building commissioner, and Jim McDonald, who's the applicant for the first case. I'm going to begin the first, let me open up the first case and we'll go from there. This is case number 15. Location of property, 340 Essex Street, type of district A2, type of structure existing, owner's name James McDonald, on this address 340 Essex Street. When did you acquire this property, 1982? Has application been filed with town clerk? Yes. Has any previous appeal been made? Yes. Section of bylaw of which relief is requested, section 7, 7-2, site plan approval, and 5, 5-4 E1 variance. Reason for asking relief? Owner wishes to open a small retail store and a portion of the existing commercial garage to sell dog and cat food. This case was advertised in the Whitman Hampton Express on November 19th and November 26th. As of now, sitting on the case will be myself, Mr. Gilmetti, Mr. Keeman, and Mr. Blaws. And Mr. McDonald, just to state this on the record, so we're waiting for a fifth member to join, Mr. Andrews. Mr. Cacciatore asked to recuse himself in this matter. So what I wanted to do is proceed, and if it looks like we're not going to get four votes in favor, then we'll continue the hearing. Or if Mr. Andrews joins, we'll be all set. But otherwise, I think, to see if we can avoid continuing it, we'll proceed with the four we have. The reading of the list of abutters, I note that there are no abutters present. I do have a letter that was signed by several abutters, which I'll read into the record during the hearing. Do I hear a motion to waive the reading of the list of abutters?
So may, so moved.
Moved by Mr. Blaws, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Keeman, I'll take a roll call vote on this. Mr. Blaws?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmetti?
Yes.
And myself, John Goldrosen, yes. For, let me, I'm going to put up the site plan. Give me a minute, and I will. Okay, is that on the screen, site plan?
Not yet. There it is.
Yes.
All right. I know. Okay. With that up on the screen, I'm not able, I was trying to keep my eye out for Mr. Andrews joining. Mr. Tully, can you keep an eye out for Wayne Andrews calling in and promote him to panelist?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There is a sunny in the, in the attendees.
Is that, is that Mr., was it Oberd, or? There's somebody who's gonna join for a later case. But why go ahead and promote them to a panelist, whoever it is? Mr. McDonald, would you explain to us what it is you want to do?
Um, so, in that property that you see on the screen, that's the, I believe the most, that's the plot plan submitted in October 5th. Kyle Gravi did that. The property was a, when I started this project and I went to the board back in, I think it was 1998, for the approval for the, for the business, you can see how it's cut in half. There is a large section of industrial and a portion that was A2 residential.
This is all limited industrial back here, this is.
Yes.
In front.
Yes, and at the time, we went for a variance to, to use the property as commercial, because residential really wasn't, I don't know, great use at the time. So I did do that, and I was approved for the five commercial buildings, which is A, B, C, D, and the garage in the middle. So using this as commercial, I'm sorry.
That's this one right here, I have the.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and then right below that, you'll see the hash mark, that's the proposed spot for the store.
Can enlarge this a little bit, here we go.
So I ca, I mean, I calculated the square footage of the commercial buildings, the store is about, like, comes out to like 2% of the use. That building was used to use for my equipment that I used to plow for the town, I did some other work with it, and since I've got out of that, and that building really has not been being used for much. My girlfriend Judy is in the dog food, cat food, and the dog industry, was laid off at the beginning of COVID, waiting to go back, and I said, why don't we just try to do it here on our own? I approached the building department, and I spoke with Mr. Curran. I was asked to get plot plan from Kyle Garvey, which he did the new one, the old site plan approval was oh one, so he did the new site plan approval, which is what you're looking at, showing plenty of parking, including another handicap parking spot across from the store. So. As you mentioned earlier, we talked with the neighbors, we submitted a letter for that. I also spoke with the fire chief, police chief, and everybody seems to think it's, shouldn't be a problem as far as the property goes. I've been running the businesses here for years, and have never had a problem with the neighbors, have never had a problem with traffic. And so I, I think it'll be a good, small use of that portion of the building, it'd be a good service to the town, and I think it'll help out some people as far as, you know, what, what it is that's in there. The hours we're looking at are minimal, like nine to six, so there's not, no late night. Offering delivery, you know, to, to people that can't get out, curbside pickup, because everybody's dealing with the COVID right now. The property, even though it's still separated and shown, half and half, it was approved for business back, and I think it was 97 or 98, and I've never had an issue before, and dealt very well with the town before, and I think it's, I think it'd be a good business for the town, and, you know, as well as for Judy, and so that's kind of where I'm going with that, is it's, it's, it's in an existing building, I'm not building anything new, I'm just basically using up a portion of the, of my commercial garage that hasn't really been used for a while, and I think it'd be a good use for that, and good for, not only here, but also for the town.
Okay, let me, let me ask, can ask a couple questions now. I'll read letters into the record from the planning board, from the neighbors. What, what's the square footage of the, the portion of the garage that would be used for this?
360 square feet.
Okay. And Mr. Curran, how much parking is he, I mean, I'd see that you've, Mr. McDonald, you've got like six spaces there. How much parking is he required to have, Mr. Curran?
One space for each 300 square feet.
So he really only needs like two spaces?
Yes.
Yeah, so that would be, I just suggest to the board, the only concern that I have when I looked at this was the, the parking spaces at the end of buildings A and B where they're kind of sticking out, you know, they're, you've got two spaces on each, at the end of each building, perpendicular to each building, and I know you have, you know, when I've gone by there, I see trucks parked in, you know, in this area, and obviously people who use this for storage, they sometimes come in with oversized vehicles and so forth. I, I would just assume, not, let, you know, unless there's some reason why you want more than two spaces, just have two and let it be like a space flat against the building for building B, and another one you've got, you've already have right alongside the building for building C, I guess it is, at the rear, and let it just be those two spaces, and if you ever had more people, they can just park in the aisles between the, the buildings, and, you know, it isn't like you got a lot of traffic going into a self-storage unit. So that's one suggestion I would make. The other suggestion I'd make, if, if this is, you know, just for yourself and for Judy and Mr. McDonald, that, that we limit, that we have a condition that limits this operation to, you know, the, is she a property owner or just you?
I'm the property owner, but she lives here, so she wouldn't need a parking spot because she parks here anyway.
Yeah, so, so that'd be, that we limit this permit to the resident, you know, to be operated by the residents of the site, and the reason I say that, Mr. McDonald, is otherwise, if we just issue a special permit to sell cat and dog food, that, most special permits run with the property with, you know, forever, so you could lease, lease the, out to somebody else, or you, you know, you sell the building, they lease, you know, they rent it out to somebody else, and, and now you've got, you gotta worry about employee parking and so forth, so rather than have to deal with that, that's the suggestion I would make if that's what your intent is.
And I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Okay, let me read letters into the record. If it's okay with the board, I'm gonna close this screen, I think you all have copies of this anyway, and that way I can see everybody. Okay, I have some letters to read into the record, and then we'll have questions from members of the board from the planning board at the October 13, 2020 meeting. The board reviewed the plan for 340 Essex Street, the planning board recommends approval of the site plan, provided sufficient parking does not take away from the existing use of the existing structures around it, and it is not more detrimental to the space. Signed Eric Kretorius, chairman. From the Board of Health, the chair and the health inspector, the Whitman Board of Health have no objections to the petition of James McDonald for variance to open a small retail store and a portion of the existing garage to sell dog and cat food at the above location. Our records indicate that this property is connected to municipal water and sewer. Mary Kelly Clerk, from Whitman Fire Rescue and Emergency Services, I have no objections to the proposed application of relief for the above listed address. I have had discussions with Mr. McDonald regarding the proposed store. The occupancy would need to be current with fire codes, specifically proper exit signage, fire extinguisher placement, and fire alarm detection system, along with a Knox box located at the main entrance. Sincerely Timothy Grenau, fire chief. And then I have a, a letter that Mr. McDonald circulated to his neighbors, and the letter reads, to whom it may concern, we Judy and Jim are in the process of opening a nutritional pet food store on the property within the existing commercial garage of Essex Street Storage, as you are abutters to our property, we are respectfully informing you of our intention. This will be a small business venture with minimal influence on traffic flow. We are asking that you acknowledge our business venture by signing this notice, which will be presented to the town of Whitman prior to the variance meeting. By signing this notice, you are not opposed to us opening this new small business, you will be notified by mail when this meeting will take place. Thank you for helping support local small businesses, Judy and Jim. It's signed by four people, and I'll, I'll give their addresses, because I'm not sure if they're, if I can read their signatures, but these are the owners of 333 Essex, 318 Essex, 347 Essex, and 285 Essex. All right, with that, I'll go to members of the board. Mr. Keeman, any questions or comments?
I have no question. The only question I was talking, looking at was, when you were talking about the parking, if, even if he was able to angle those two spots at the end of both those buildings, it would give him more clearance between cars and that garage building to get the fire apparatus back there or anything else. If he needed the extra space, maybe if he just angled them a little bit, that'd give him a little bit more room around it.
Yeah, but I think if he just makes the spaces flat against, you know, parallel to the building, one space flat against the building, that'd be better yet, because I am concerned about circulation, I, you know, I didn't think of the fire trucks, but certainly people who come in to use the storage units, you know, bring trucks, crielles, whatever, so I think, I think that would be safer. Mr. Blaws, any comments or questions?
Just a couple of the, on the plot plan, I see lot four and lot three, is there a lot one and lot two? On the application, it says lot two A.
Mr. McDonald, do you know, must have been some history here. Was the property divided up at the time that you, maybe with storage units?
The ori, the original property was one, one lot, the whole entirety, which consisted of 342 Essex Street and 340 Essex Street. In the process of the subdivision, which was back in that 1998, when we went for the approval before, it was addressed as, I don't know why, two A, was addressed as lot one and lot two on the final approval. And looking, I have the. Looking for the original. Oh, it's over here, sorry. That's the 2020. So when the, when it was approved, in 2001, it was approved as lot one and lot two. And on the new site plan approval. I don't know why Kyle wrote three and four.
All right.
It's the same.
The assessor's information has it lot two A.
Is, is the, the storage unit property is lot two A?
Yes, it is, and that, that's where, that, I actually helped, I think I filled out that form, and I got it right out of the assessor's data, database.
Okay. This will want the decision to have the correct information. And Mr. McDonald, the, the house that's at the front of the property, what, what's the address of that house?
On, on the.
Lot four?
So that's 342 Essex Street, that's, that's also mine.
Okay.
That was the original house on the entire property before this first subdivision.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've got the original site plans back from 2001, and it, it showed it as lot two. Lot one is where 342 is, and lot two is where the storage units are.
All right.
So that's where the assessors got their information to create a two A, once it was subdivided.
All right. All right, Mr. Blaws, is that, I don't know if that answers your question, but is that enough?
Yeah, in fact, in fact, John, the notes on the side of that, the plan, the site plan submitted, says assessor's map 16 and 35D, block 107, lot two A.
Okay.
So for whatever reason, I, who knows why he put lot three in there.
Okay, well, just, you know, as you said, John, just, these little things are pretty important. Does the, does the, the, the building or the retail store, does that have like plumbing and heating and that sort of facilities in it?
So the existing garage with, in its entirety, had, has a bathroom, and it has a heating system, so that's all been existing, so there's nothing new into that portion? So I think that, I don't know if that answers your question, the, the plumbing and the water and the, in the bathroom has been existing since the building was built.
Yeah.
The heating, the heating system, the same, what, same thing.
Now, where it's gonna be kind of open to the public, because it's a retail establishment, I was just wanting, wondering that, does this need a common VIC license from the board of selection? No? Okay, just making sure. No, this all looks pretty straightforward. Oh, there's a sign out front, where you, how are you gonna advertise this?
So the, the existing sign that you're referring to?
Yeah.
Is a four by eight horizontal? I was gonna go to the left side and, and, and come down on fourth, like a four by four or four by six, straight down on the left side, so it wouldn't come out over where people can drive through. I don't know if that makes sense or not?
Yeah, is that okay, Bobby, with our sign bylaw?
Well, the, I think, Jim, you know, the sign bylaw, the bylaw says it's a pylon sign can be no lower than eight feet nor higher than 20. And it can have up to 100 square feet of sign area?
So which, whatever, whatever's required for a sign, I haven't purchased a sign yet, so whatever Mr. Curran wants, or am allowed, that's what I would do. I wouldn't do anything outside of the, the rules and regs.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're all, we're all aware.
Does he need any, any, any condition of relief from us, Bob Curran?
I think he's got plenty of room, the only issue is if he was gonna go lower than what the existing sign is. I think he can deal with the, the, the regulations the way they are.
Okay, all right, so he doesn't need any relief from us?
Very good. I'm all good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gilmetti, anything?
Yes. Yes, how, Jim, how are you?
Hi Fred, how are you?
I'm holding on.
You look good for 82.
By the time it gets down to me, all the questions have been asked, but I just had one, one question, I don't think that Mr. Blaws asked. How often do you have an auction of a unit?
I don't.
You don't?
I don't. I, I try to settle up with the customers and don't have the auctions, it just, I didn't want to draw a crowd.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned with, with the parking and the, probably the parking would be in the street or whatever.
Yeah, no, I've never had an auction, I don't plan to.
Okay. All right, that's all I got, John.
Okay, I just got a couple more questions. For the garage that's, there's a garage in front of the one that you're proposing to use for the cat and, for the pet food store, right?
Well, it says it on there, let me see, with on the, on the newer one, the newer plan, because I got the old one too. No, that's no longer a garage, that's, was proposed. I'm sorry, you look at.
Plan that was submitted, so if it's.
Okay, so on that plan, you have the existing garage with the, with 25% of that building proposed for the store.
Yeah.
You talking about the building closer to the street from there?
Yes, what is that?
So that used to be a garage, that was converted into an apartment and an office, and that's where I live.
Okay, and you have, so that's the parking space in front of that building is your parking space? Closer? Okay, okay.
And also, there's parking, one, if you looked on the other lot, there's like eight more parking spots, which aren't, aren't always used, so sometimes I'll park in one or two.
Okay, yeah, and, because my only, and the, the garage that the pet food store is going to be part of, is, what's the exit from that garage? When, you know, when you're using this garage, where's the door to that garage?
So there's now, well, there's, there's three, there's three garage doors across the front. The, the door with, what goes for the store, had now has a, has a regular glass door, it has a second egress into the garage with, with three more or four more doors. I don't, I can hold this up, I don't know if this.
Yeah.
I can see this.
My question really, Mr. McDonald, is, I was just concerned again in terms of.
Egress?
The parking, you know, the parking that's proposed and so forth, is whether somebody going in or out of that garage would also be affected if we create parking spaces near it, but if the, like, if the park, if the entrance to the garage is at the rear of the garage further away from Essex Street, that wouldn't be an issue, but if it's on the side facing building B, that would be an issue, so that, that's why I asked what, how you get in and out of the garage.
Well, they are on that side, but there's nobody going in and out of there, that's, that's the garage that I use for all my commercial equipment, which I don't have anymore.
Okay, but I don't want to preclude you from doing that, you know, so that's, that'd be another reason, like, to not have a parking space alongside building B then, because you might want to be getting in and out of the garage.
Well, it, it's actually, I know that on the plan, it's actually quite a bit of space there, and, and what you had mentioned earlier, if you were to turn the parking spots just parallel to the building, we didn't want to use that spot for a handicap spot, because it's closest to the store. But even if, with a car there, the, to get in and out of the garage, it's still really not unreasonable, reasonable, but, and like I said, the only one that goes in and out of that garage is myself.
Okay. Mr. Curran, but what does he need for a handicap space, and can a handicap space be parallel to the building, or is that prevented from being usable as a handicap space?
The unloading area can't be in a traveled aisle, so it would have to have a, it would be one handicap spot is required, and it has to be ban accessible, which means it needs an eight-foot unloading area?
Yeah, so, so he really does have to, if, if we want it closest to the store, he really does need a vertical spa, a space that's perpendicular to building B, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
If you were to eliminate, I know that Kyle drew in space three and four, if you would eliminate four, it'd still have enough numbers of parking spots, but that would also move, it would eliminate that 10-foot spot, and, and, and the handicap really should be where number three is, and four doesn't need to exist.
Yeah, that would be your unloading zone, so.
Yeah.
What I propose to the board, how about if we have one space alongside, parallel to alongside building A, one space alongside building C, and then the handicap space would be perpendicular to that to building B, does that sound okay to everybody? And Mr. Curran, does that sound?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so that's the, is there any further discussion? I think every, you know, I think we've got four people in favor, Mr. McDonald, on this one, so I think we can go ahead. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'm gonna close the.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Sure, close the hearing. Sure, close the hearing and, uh, proceed to a motion and a vote. Can someone make a motion?
So moved, John.
All right, so approval with the parking that I outlined, is that right, Mr. Gilman?
That doesn't bother me.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Second, my Mr. Blas. Okay, so it's to approve, uh, the use for the cat and dog, uh, pet food, it says a pet food store, with, uh, spaces parallel to alongside buildings A and C and a handicap space perpendicular to building B, also with the condition that this is only for operation by the residents of the property. All right, uh, let me take a vote on that then. Mr. Gilmetti?
Yes.
Mr. Blas?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
And myself, John Goldrosen, yes, so that's four row, uh, the application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and.
If you have any animals, come down.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me move on to the, uh, the next hearing where are the five?
Can we do this next one in six minutes?
Let's see, at least we got, we got five for this one because Mr. Katchatory can sit on this one. So, uh, it's Mr. Nathan.
Yep, get in the picture, honey.
Hi.
Okay, there's Mr. Nathan and, uh, Sonny and Adolf Oberit, if you're here for the, I remember right, you're here for the eight o'clock case, so just, just hang on because they'll get to that as soon as we can finish this one up. Uh, so I'm going to go right ahead and otherwise I don't think we have any abutters, let's see, let me just, I think Annette Jones is here for the eight o'clock case too, as I recall.
That's right.
Okay. All right, we're running a little behind, but just hang on, we'll, we'll get to that. Okay, I'm going to open the hearing for case number sixteen. This is, uh, for Six Coholan Drive, type of district zone A one, type of structure existing, single family dwelling. Owner's name, Paul Nathan Jr., owner's address, Six Coholan Drive. When did you acquire this property? Nineteen ninety-four. Has application been filed with town clerk? Yes. Has any previous appeal been made? No. Section of bylaw of which relief is requested, section five, five dash four E seven, page twenty-four. Reason for asking relief, we wish to operate a hobby kennel as required by the town bylaws for five dogs. She zoo, which will be kept as pets. This case was advertised in the Whitman Hansen Express on November nineteenth and November twenty-sixth. Sitting on the case will be, uh, Mr. Gilman, Mr. Blas, Mr. Keeman, Mr. Katchatory and myself, John Goldrosen. At this time, we'll have the reading of the list of abutters unless I hear a motion to waive the reading. I don't believe we have any abutters present.
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Keeman moved, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second, my Mr. Katchatory, I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Blas?
Yes.
Mr. Gilman?
Yes.
Mr. Katchatory?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
And myself, John Goldrosen, yes. Give me a minute, I'm going to, uh, open up the site plan on this.
She need coffee over there.
Bob, thank you and your secretary for helping me with all the paperwork here. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
It's my fault that we ended up with five. I have three old ones, that's why. I got one puppy. But she cried for a week. I had to go get her sister.
Okay, let me, uh, share the screen with this. Okay, can people see the, uh, site plan? Okay. Okay, Mr. Nathan, why don't you go ahead and explain to us what you want to do? Uh, let me, let me first ask Mr. Curran, can you explain what the relief is that they need here and why we're involved?
Yes, John, this gets a little bit complicated, but.
That's why I asked you.
Yes. Okay, so this is not a hobby kennel and it's not a commercial kennel. It's a, just considered a regular kennel. It's one pack or collection of four or more dogs over the age of three months, kept on a single premise, not to exceed X number of dogs, which this board could decide on that. Uh, but in the general, in the general bylaws, it goes on to say that a kennel license will be in lieu of any other license upon a variance granted by the Board of Appeals, and it says see appropriate bylaw required for any dog which may be kept, um, on and on. So our bylaw, when you get into kennels, the only section that discusses that is a veterinary establishment or kennel used for boarding purposes, provided that animals are kept indoors and provided that such uses are located on the same premise as a dwelling and conducted by the resident thereof. And for each zone except for industrial, it's a special permit required. So it's my opinion that this board could grant a simple special permit. Um, and I think that gives you a little bit more leeway, uh, in your decision.
All right, and what, what other permits do the applicants need? Do they need something from the Board of Health or who, who else, anybody else?
I'm not so sure. The, the, what's going on? What, the reason why the owners are here for this is, is soon as somebody has four dogs, the, uh, clerk's office will refuse to issue a dog license for the fourth dog because it constitutes a kennel under the definition.
Okay.
So that's why the applicant is here. Uh, we've got a few more in the town that I think this board well knows. There's been kennel licenses that are given out that as the dogs leave, they don't replace them or, um, or they can, that's up to this board.
All right, so we'll treat this as needing a special permit because it's four or more dogs. Is that, that's my understanding there?
Yeah, and I would think that our zoning bylaws would, would, um, trump the, um, general bylaws because that's what this board is about.
That's right, all we can do is give zoning relief, so.
Right, and the only relief that says here is a special permit.
Okay, all right, all right, so with that background, uh, Mr. Mason, if you want to explain to us what you want to do and enlarge.
We have them as pets. I have three fourteen-year-olds. They, one's not doing too well, so I wanted a puppy. So I went and got a puppy and then the puppy cried, cried for a whole week. So I went back and I got her sister so she could have a flavor.
And these are strictly house pets.
Yeah.
The dogs are all white, I mean, they've, they're rabies shots, they're all spayed. We're not going to be breeding them, believe me. These are just family pets. These are our kids, basically.
Okay, and we're, just maybe explain, since you've got the site plan, and I've got the cursor here, and it's.
The whole backyard is fenced in.
Fence for them or what, what do you have?
Yeah, the whole backyard is fenced in from the rear of the house back.
This is here.
That's, that's it there. It's all fenced in and these are indoor dogs. They only go out in the backyard to exercise, do their business. Other than that, they're in the house all day long.
All right.
Yeah.
They're small, they're shih-tzus.
I think that the heaviest one is one of the puppies.
But the average weight is around fourteen, sixteen pounds.
Yeah, but she's twenty-two pounds.
Okay. Okay, let me, um, see what else I have for paperwork here. Okay, if it's okay with everybody, I'm just going to, I'm going to close the plan off since you all should have copies of it anyway, and, uh, that way I can, we can see each other better. So, uh, I do have letters from the, uh, planning board and Board of Health to read into the record. Uh, at the October twenty-seven, twenty twenty meeting, the planning board reviewed the plan for Six Coholan Drive. Planning board recommends approval with the stipulation that the approval is for five dogs. If the owner wishes to add more dogs, they will need to appear in front of for an amendment to the special permit. Sincerely, Eric Vittori as chairman. And, uh, Board of Health, the, uh, Chair and the Health Inspector, the Whitman Board of Health have no objections to the petition of Paul Nathan Jr. for a variance to operate a hobby kennel for five dogs at the above location, Mary Kelly Clerk. Okay, I'll go out to members of the board for comments and, uh, questions. Uh, Mr. Keeman?
I have no questions.
Yeah, Mr. Katchatory?
Um, if the, uh, Moroccans and the, uh, Lences don't complain, I, I.
No, uh, matter of fact, they, they enjoy our dogs with us, especially the, uh, the Lences. We got Bobby and Kim on the other side. They'll come out all the time to, to chat with them or they'll come in the yard and play with them. Yeah, they have no problems with them, you know what I mean? They don't run the neighborhood, they're in the backyard.
All right.
You know, I get along well with both my neighbors, so I know there's no complaints.
Uh, anything else, Mr. Katchatory?
Nope.
All right, Mr. Blas?
No, uh, nothing other than to, um, uh, what, what Mr. Katchatory brought up, just, uh, a note that both, um, the Lences and the Moroccans are listed on the, um, the, the abutters, the letter, uh, and so should have, we should have received letters of the hearing.
I've spoken to them both and they know that the hearing's going on. I thought the Lences would be chiming in, but, um, I guess he didn't turn on his computer.
Okay, all right, uh, anything else, Mr. Blas?
No, no, that's it, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gilman, anything?
Uh, no problem with it, John.
Yeah, and I don't either. Uh, so if we put a condition that it's limited to five dogs total, is that okay with, uh?
Any more than five, you need your head examined.
No, they're a lot of work.
They're a lot of work, the five. I won't do anymore.
Okay.
The puppies are a lot of work.
All right, I, unless anybody has anything, I'm prepared to close the hearing. Are we all set? Uh, okay, I'm going to close the hearing and entertain a motion for a special permit to allow, uh, a kennel of up to five dogs on this property. Is there a motion to that effect?
John, so moved.
Moved by Mr. Blas, is there a second?
I'll second it, John.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Gilman, he seconded, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Blas?
Yes.
Mr. Gilman?
Yes.
Mr. Katchatory?
Yes, no more than five.
No more.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
And myself, John Goldrosen, yes, so it is approved.
Thank you. Again, Bob and your administrative assistant, thank you very much.
Congratulations, take care.
Thank you.
All right, we're almost, almost back on schedule. So, um,
High Street.
All right, all right, I'm going to go ahead and, um, open the hearing, so let me see. It's Jones, you can unmute yourself and likewise for the, the Oberts, the Oberts, if you want to unmute yourself and, uh, Slawbacker as well, Mr. Manning, I see you're unmuted, okay. And so everybody who's in the meeting now, I assume is, is here for the eight o'clock case with the three thirty high street. All right, who has the dog?
I do.
All right, but why don't you mute yourself until you need to speak? All right, let me open the hearing. This is, uh, case number seventeen, location of property, three thirty High Street. Type of district, residence A one, type of structure, existing dwelling, proposed dwelling in law. Owner's name, Lawbacker Family Irrevocable Trust. Owner's address, three thirty High Street. When did you acquire this property? Uh, nineteen ninety-five. His application been filed with town clerk? Yes. Has any previous appeal been made? No. Section of bylaw of which relief is requested, section six, six dash six, special permit for accessory apartment within single family home. Reason for asking relief, proposed use is allowed by special permit to allow family member to occupy the residence of another family member. This case was advertised in the Whitman Hansen Express on November nineteenth and November twenty-sixth. And, uh, sitting on the case will be, uh, Mr. Blas, Mr. Gilman, Mr. Keeman, Mr. Katchatory and myself, John Goldrosen. Scott, are you okay on sitting on this one?
I'm fine.
Okay, good, good. All right, that gives us five. Um, Mr. Blas, would you read the list of abutters and while you're doing that, I'm going to get the plot plan lined up.
Excellent. Uh, the following is in a butters list using the State Zoning Act, parties of interest for the property located at three thirty High Street, book four nine seven five three, page two, three, eight. Town of Whitman, Michael and Katie Miller, Philip Philbin, Adolf and Sonia Oberit, Paul and Evelyn Deschambault, Robert and Nancy Romary, Andrea Healy, April Antonio, Carlos Givasio, Richard and Marilyn Manning, John Costello, William and Elizabeth Smith, Ali Berry, and finally, Alcides and Mary Vega.
Okay, uh, all right, let me, I am getting better at this. Okay, we should all be able to see the, uh, the plot plan. Okay, um, Slawbacker, do you want to explain what you want to do?
Uh, well, there's an existing structure with the garage. And I think, I think because it, when it was built, it may have been, well, from speaking with Kyle Gavi, the way the plot plan is done up, it appears that there was that little wedge on the original plan that said owner unknown, but then through a lot of research, we found out that the Oberts, um, Adolf and Sonia Oberit own that, I think it's like a thousand square feet or a thousand fifty-four square feet. The way that was, the way that was.
Is that sort of that little strip there?
Like a little pie shape?
Yeah.
Yep, so the way that was, this is according to Kyle Gavi, the way that that was parcelled out, the, it, he may have more information of, but it was, said that it was probably intended to be transferred to Bud Talpe, who was the owner of the house before we were, uh, because it was listed out as a parcel two. But somewhere, I wasn't around then, somewhere back then, it, it probably just never went ahead. But I think because of the way the house is sitting, the back end of the garage is still close to the property line, but it wouldn't have been with that pie shape, so that, maybe that's for another, another issue or another thing, but, in order for us to, to put the addition above the garage and add four feet to have an enclosed stairwell and some laundry there, it, it will be too close to the line as it exists now. Now, we always thought our line was to where the tree line is, which is the inside of the pie shape. We thought our abutters were Robert and Nancy Romary until we went to do this project and found out that there's this pie shape there that we weren't aware of. And we've been using the land for twenty-six years not knowing that. Um, so I reached out to, um, Afy and Paul Deschambault, they're part of the family grouping that owns this land and went to an attorney to see. and went to an attorney to see and, and send out to see if that could be deeded over. We're still waiting on that, so I guess how it would be is that if we're able to get that land deeded, we can go with the maximum size, which is on the plan, I think that was sent over by Carl. Um, and if not, we may be confined to the existing garage, so I guess the maximum would be the plan that was submitted.
Okay.
Uh, with the contingency that that land gets deeded and then we will be within, um, the, the bylaws or the, the laws for it.
All right, so you're proposing to put the in-law above the existing garage?
Correct, right where you're handing, yeah.
Now, does that, uh, involve changing the, the profile, the, is there already a second floor above that garage or are you gonna have to like build up? What, what do you have to do?
Well, there's, there is, I mean, I, I guess I don't know the lingo, but there's the garage and then there's like some space above, there's a floor and a space above it so that they would go up. Um, take, take that off and yeah, I guess go, go up with it, with a.
And the, the main house, is that two stories?
Yes, it is.
Okay, are you going to connect the second story of the main house to this in-law apartment above the garage?
Not at this time, we're still waiting for some numbers to come in, um, on pricing, it is connected through a breezeway, um, in the garage area.
Right, that's your breezeway there? Where my cursor.
Oh, yeah, yes, it is.
Okay, all right. Um, so you're not, uh, so you're gonna continue using the garage as a garage?
Correct, yeah.
So there's not gonna be any additional, uh, doors on the?
Nothing on the front, the, the, the goal was, is by going oh, four feet from the existing garage that we could have an enclosed stairwell.
All right.
In there, and so that door would access from the side of the house instead of the front.
Okay, good, cuz that's part of the bylaws where the bylaw wants the house to maintain the appearance of the single-family house, if you put it on the side.
The side or the back.
Or you have, you know, access and so, through the garage even, something like that, but anyway.
Exactly.
That would be okay, so you will be putting like essentially a second, the garage will become a two-story section, so you can.
Right.
At the in-law, and how many rooms would be in the in-law apartment?
Well, it's drawn up now for, I mean, it's not a lot of square footage, it's drawn up now for, um, an in-law, like a kitchen, living area and two small bedrooms, like a sitting room and a bedroom, a bathroom.
Okay, what, what is the square, what would be the square footage of the apartment?
I don't know if I'll lose you if I try to pull that up on my computer, uh, I wanna say it was somewhere around six or seven hundred square feet.
Okay, all right, that gives us an approximate idea, and what do you have, what's, what is the number of rooms in the, uh, existing house?
The existing house is four-bedroom, two ba-, one and a half bath, kitchen, living room, and a small like den area.
Okay, all right.
Another sitting room, yeah. So, it's a small room, so it's like, I think it's like eighteen hundred square feet or something like that.
Okay, and who, who would be occupying the in-law?
Well, the, the goal is my dad, but he's ninety-nine and he came to live with me last, last fall. Um, he's a World War Two vet, they, they basically sent him home to die and here he is, trooping away. His goal is one oh-five, we'll see what he does, but so far, um, he's improved and, um, like I said, the, those vets, those World War Two vets, they, they just never complain and just keep on moving on. So that, that's the goal, um. So we'll see, if it's not, I mean, it's definitely for family, um, we have no intention of using it as rental property at all.
Right, and that's, that's something we always, uh, I always make a point of in, in explaining and instructing people that, if, if this is approved, it is for use only by family.
Absolutely.
And if it ceases to be for that use, you cannot rent it as a second unit, you just.
Believe me, I don't want, I don't want to.
Right, but you know, and, and if, if, uh, when you sell the house, if somebody buys the house, they have to come back to the board if they want to use that as a in-law unit.
Okay.
So we continue to keep track of it.
Okay.
If, uh, Mr. Cullen, let me just ask you an issue then on the zoning, so assume for a moment that they, that they do not own this pie-shaped parcel, that's not part of lot, but shown as lot one A. Is the existing house non-conforming? Is the garage already so close to the property line that it's non-conforming?
Well, it, he, this is residence A one, um, the side setback would be twenty feet. And it appears to me that there is um, around twelve feet there, so, so if they don't add the four-foot addition, Mr. Chairman, they would need a simple determination and a special permit, if they do acquire that land, they would need no relief.
Right.
Other than a special permit.
Right, so if if they don't put on an addition, all they need is a special permit for the.
Well, and you need to make a determination that the second floor on the existing garage.
That's right, so that, they would need a determination that it's not, uh, more detrimental to the neighborhood. And even if they put on a four-foot addition, that we could approve through a determination because that would be increasing an existing non-conformity.
Yes, exactly.
Right, so I would suggest that you could approve the special permit for the in-law.
Yeah.
And if they acquire the land and prove it to the building department with a deed, they could build the four-foot addition.
But even if they don't acquire the land, if we give a determination.
Well, no, then they can't add the four-foot addition. So if you, I don't know if anybody's looked at the elevation of this, um, garage, it's kind of like a, what you call a salt box and it goes down, but they want to add four feet to that. That goes over towards the, uh, Romary property.
Yeah.
So that is going four feet closer to the property line, no matter what. So if they own all the way, you know, the, the pie-shaped piece, then they will, they will meet the side setback at twenty feet.
Right.
If, if they don't acquire that, then they're gonna be um, a lot less than twelve feet, right now.
But my, my point, Mr. Cullen, is they're already non-conforming with the side setback. Yeah, assuming they don't own that piece.
Right.
If they don't own that piece, they're already non-conforming, so they could put on a four, a four-foot addition.
With a determination.
With a determination.
I agree.
We ought to give them a determination for both, and if they need it, so be it, if they don't need it, so be it.
I don't disagree with that.
Okay, all right, okay, uh, let me, uh, read a couple of letters from town boards into the record, then we'll have questions from the board. And then those of you, members of the public, uh, if you just hang on, we'll have, uh, have an opportunity for your comments and questions, uh, as soon as we've had questions from members of the board. Uh, first, let me read into the record from the planning board. At the October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty meeting, the board reviewed the plan for three thirty High Street. The planning board recommends approval for the proposed in-law, provided the applicant brings in a rendering to show the zoning board that it will keep the appearance of a single-family home and that it will be used for a family member. When the use is discontinued, it should move back to a single-family home, not an apartment. Also that all building codes will be met per the building codes in the state of Massachusetts, sincerely, Eric Pretorius, Chair. And from the Board of Health, uh, the Chair and the Health Inspector of the Whitman Board of Health have no objections to the petition of Joanne Lawbacker for a special permit for an accessory apartment within the single-family home at the above location. Our records indicate that this property is connected to municipal sewer and water, Mary Kelly Clerk. Okay, um, if, although, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the, um, the plan as, as long as the board, well, tell you, let me see what happens. No, that won't do it. Oops, all right, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna close the plan, I can go back and reopen it if we need to. All right, uh, questions from members of the board, uh, Mr. Keeman?
And my only question is, the space above the breezeway, is that gonna be up to, to the second story as well? Or is it just above the garage?
The, the initial plans, it is not. Um, does that make a difference?
Well, we just need to know what it's gonna basically look like.
The, the current plan is no.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The Slawbacker, I'm, I'm gonna anticipate that someone on the board may want to know, do, do, do you have plans, um?
Mm-hmm.
Are they, you're able to, do you have plans on your computer that you could?
I do, I thought that they had, Carl had said he's, Carl, um, Gavi said he had sent them over to.
Yeah, no, the only thing I got, Carol, unless you have something, the only thing I got was the site plan, I did not get any renderings of what the building would look like, that, that's what I'm asking, if you, do you have any?
In the interior or the exterior?
The exterior, really, it's.
Well, I do, I could send, I don't know if I can get there and whether I'm gonna knock you out by doing it, but.
All right, let's.
May have, it may have two windows in the front.
Okay.
There's no overhang from the existing garage in the front. It may have two windows or no windows in the front. And then those on the side and in the back.
I, I'm sorry, no windows on the side or the back?
No, there'd be windows on the side and the back of it, the back of it.
Okay.
It's to be determined whether there'll be a couple of windows in the front.
All right.
But pretty much the same existing with the four feet, if we get the four feet to be able to go out with the staircase enclosed inside or around the back, but it's, there's nothing special or unusual about the exterior, I don't know if that answers your questions or not.
That may, we'll see if anybody on the board has any issues with that. All right, Mr. Keeman, anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kachatory, anything?
Um, Bob, wouldn't it be cost-effective, instead of digging a footing or a foundation, to extend the four feet to bring the stairs inside the breezeway and just raise the breezeway to height of the new, uh, addition?
Probably yes.
It saves you money and looks better and you're not dealing with such a property line issue.
Well, maybe I need to consult with you after.
Julie says hi, by the way. Uh, I'm just looking at it, you know, uh, it would look more to what the, what we like to see in the town for in-laws, it just looks like one house.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be more cost-effective for you.
To do a stairwell with a breezeway?
The breezeway, yes, cuz it seems to be, how wide's the breezeway, it's gotta be eight feet or more, right?
Um, probably about that, yeah, not, not much more.
But you, you'll have room for four foot.
So the stairs. But what's behind the, in the main house? Around.
You wouldn't have to put it up against the main house, you can, you walk in and just, uh, go up the stairs. Would it seem to be, um, and the bree-, is the breezeway elevated as you walk into the garage or is it the same level?
Elevated.
So, yeah, it'd be, you don't need that many stairs.
Okay.
And you're not really screwing around with your, your, uh, your, your yard or landscaping or having equipment brought in, cement trucks and so on and so forth.
Well, it's a thought, but, um, I'd have to get back to the drawing board and see because that.
I don't have an issue with it, I'm just looking at it from all possible, all sides.
No, no, I appreciate that.
Yeah, the breezeway is, um, eleven or twelve feet.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, uh, uh, well, I've scaled it, yes.
Okay, yeah.
So you got plenty of room and it's a better look.
Hmm, I know that the original plan had, um, like a washer dryer and some storage in that four-foot extension. Uh, because.
Do that same upstairs.
Is it, pardon me?
You could do that as soon as you got up to the top level of the apartment, then you still have all that area that you make in the breezeway, the same width and height.
I mean, it's certainly worth investigating.
Bob's the guy to know.
Oh, okay.
All right, anything else, uh?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, a couple things, uh, first of all, I, I just makes, you wanna make sure I have, I understand this correctly, this house was built in nineteen ninety-five?
No.
No?
That's when we bought it.
You bought it ninety-five, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, do you know whether or not the garage was part of the house when the house was built?
I do not know that. I'm assuming it was.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand how this thing could have got built.
That, it was Bud Talpe's, I don't, I don't know, um, he was a building inspector back then.
Yes, he was.
Yeah. I, I believe how it got built from, you know, this is all like forensic in a way. Uh, Carl seemed to think that the way the land was divided up and parcel two was meant to be conveyed to Bud, but something never went through, because when we bought the house from Bud, he never said, he, we, we were kind of implied that we owned over to the trees, which includes that pie shape.
Right, no, I understand that, but I, I mean, normally, um, you know, when you get a subdivision or something like, something like this, uh, things are pretty well laid out.
Yeah.
And nothing gets approved until things like the, uh, side setback where that, that piece of land being conveyed.
Did they do that in nineteen sixty-four, though? Were they that?
The house was built in sixty-four?
Yeah.
It was built in nineteen sixty-four.
Oh, okay, so it's that old, okay, I, I didn't realize it was quite that old.
Yeah.
All right, so that, I guess that explains it.
Yeah.
The, uh, so that was question one, uh, the, I was gonna ask whether or not there were gonna be any exterior alterations. Um, and if there were no exterior alterations, I would be fine, uh, I, I, I think I'm the one, I'm the individual that the chairman was, uh, referring to, uh, regarding the elevated drawings, um, seeing what the building looks like from the outside.
Okay.
Um, and if there was no, if there was no exterior alterations, I'd be fine not seeing elevated plants. But where there is gonna be a second floor put on it, um, part of our job as the Board of Appeals is to make determination that, um, the dwelling maintains the look of a single-family. And I don't know how we do that, um, without actually seeing.
You want me to try to get on and see if I can get?
I'd definitely like to see it, I, but I also have another question, um, are either the Romar, the Romaries or the Ma-, the Mannings, um, are, are either of those, um, houses, uh, do either of those houses have in-laws existing?
Richie, I think you have to unmute.
Yeah, yeah, uh, whoops. Mr. Manning, uh, I'll, I'll let you respond. Mr. Manning, do you want?
Yes, my house is a, my house is an in-law.
It does have an in-law, okay.
Okay, that's good.
Very good, and then, uh, what about, what are the Romar, Romaries on the, uh, on, on the hearing or in the hearing?
I don't think they are. Are the Romaries here? I don't see them listed.
No, I don't think they've got.
Okay.
Then they don't have an in-law.
Okay.
They don't, okay, okay, very good, um, I think those are the only questions I have, I would like to see an elevated drawing, though.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if I can pull this up.
When we, uh, continue, it's with, with the hearing and that we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
And if you wanna look for.
Well, you know what, I'm sorry, John, I was gonna make one more, one other comment, um, to the applicant. So your, your father's ninety-nine years old and you're gonna make him go up, you're gonna make him go up a flight of stairs?
He might, he might, it might, it's, it's gonna be a family member, I assure you, but he wants to see this get done.
Do you have, uh?
You'd have to meet him, you'd have to meet him to know.
Are you putting an elevator in?
Well, it could be a chairlift.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
I am looking for the plans here because I think you'd, it basically looks very similar just to, uh, a go-, you know, when you see garages, that just have a big room above, built above.
Yeah, room above the garage.
That's what the exterior looks like on it.
All right, see, see what you can find, I'll, I'll, we'll continue on.
Will I lose you, do you know if I go to my email here?
No, no, you should be able to just open up your email.
Can you hear me now, cuz I've, I've left you.
She has screen button.
You're still there.
Okay, good, okay, I'm trying to pull in on that.
All right, I'll let you, we'll hold on.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, I'm sorry that we didn't get it. John? Yeah? You gonna get to me? Yeah, yeah, I just figured I'd let her bring the plan up if she can do that.
John, I may add that I think that house was built before zoning.
Well, if it was built in sixty-four, that's after zoning was in effect, though, right?
I don't think so, I think zoning came in after that.
No, nineteen sixty was the first.
Came in sixty, Bobby?
Well, it was adopted in fifty-eight, and the first public hearing was around nineteen sixty.
Okay. All right.
But the zoning certainly was different then, so that setback, well, either way, that setback might have been, this might have been A2 at the time, which would have been a fifteen-foot setback.
I know Bud was pretty straight-laced, I don't think he would have violated.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt, I do have the plans, but how do I get them to you?
Okay, I think, is there a share, if you go to the bottom of your screen, do you see a button that says Share Screen?
Okay, let me, sorry, I'm not so great. Just give me one second.
You may have to put your cursor over there to see the options.
I'm trying to find you again. Oh dear. Connect with us. There you are, okay, so at the bottom of the screen.
If you put your cursor over the bottom of the screen, do you see things like video, participants, shares?
Yep, and I see Share Screen.
All right, click on Share Screen.
Okay, I'm just.
And let's see if that, if you have the, do you have the plan open on your screen?
I did, and then it just left again, sorry. I know I can get this back again, just give me one second. Good heavens. Okay, here we go.
So when you click on Share Screen, anything else that you have open on your computer, including that plan, should be available to you to click on.
Sorry again. I had to go back to the plan, it opened and then it left. I have the plans open.
Click on Share Screen.
And that's on the Zoom, correct?
Yeah, on the Zoom screen, if you click on Share Screen.
Okay, let me find that again. Share Screen, okay, got it.
Now, does that show you, are you now looking at anything else on your screen, like the plan, your emails, whatever?
Wiper, okay, whiteboard. Losing you there. Safari, I must be on, let's see if I'm on Safari. So I just pick which one I'm on, is that how that works?
You pick the one you wanna open, that you wanna share, so if you see the plan on the screen, you should be able to click on that.
Okay, I'm testing.
When you hit Share Screen, can you see the plan?
I see it, but I don't think you guys see it.
If you click on it, if you see it, just like, you know, click or double-click on the plan, and that should.
Okay, there it is, okay, it just, it took a while to load.
Okay, let's see if it pops up. There we go.
Oh, good.
Now, great, great.
So do I scroll down so you can see more?
Yeah, I don't know that I can scroll down, so.
You just tell me, tell me if I go too fast, all right?
Just hold it at the first one, so this is the front view.
This is now?
Yeah, so the top screen, the top half of that is how it looks now. The bottom half is how it would look with the.
That's the initial proposal, yeah, that's why I said I haven't fine-tuned like windows and all.
And that's with the four-foot stairwell on the side.
Yes, it is.
Stair is on the side of the building. All right, go ahead, go ahead and scroll down. That's just looking at a different angle.
Yeah, it's all a different angle, yeah.
Yeah.
Tell me, continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
That's the back.
Blas, if you see anything you wanna stop and comment on?
Well, I'm just looking, it looks like there's two houses that are built right next to each other.
Yeah. So that's the rear of it, you've got a pool there, so you're gonna put like a deck on the back of that.
All is, you know, whether it's cost, you know.
Yeah.
Cost of that, yeah.
Okay, all right. That's again, before and after. All right, why don't you go back to, is that the, what else have you got there? Go ahead.
Okay, that's all exterior, yeah, that's exterior.
All right, and the rest is the interior? Does anybody need to see the interior?
No, but I don't see how the two would be joined. I thought I heard there was a breezeway from the existing house to the, to what would be, to the space above the garage.
Yeah, go back to the top.
That's right here.
But that's not the space above the garage, that is to the garage.
Right. Correct.
Okay, what I heard was there was an existing breezeway from the house to the space above the garage.
No, that's what I think Steve was proposing.
Instead of the excavation.
No, no, what I was talking about was something connecting the, no, I know there's a breezeway on the first floor.
Yeah.
But nothing connecting the second floor to the second floor.
No, not up here.
With what you have proposed now, if we look, if you put the addition on the garage, what, are you proposing a connection there above the breezeway between the existing?
You mean up here?
Yeah, but if you go down to the second image, yeah, so is that gonna be a?
As it stands now, that's not in the plans.
Okay. All right, that was just, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, but this does not have, this does not maintain the appearance of a single family.
Okay.
Which is the requirement of the in-law.
Right, but when people put rooms over their garage.
Yeah.
Is that to maintain?
They do it, they do it in such a way that the home itself still looks like a single-family home. The existing dwelling is laid out in such a way that allows them to do that.
I guess it's a little odd here, because the existing house, can I just scroll up to the top, Mr. Slavak? The existing house is kind of unusual, because it's almost like the main house doesn't face the street.
It's a grim gambrel turned sideways.
Yeah, if it were the other way, it'd be easier somehow.
Bud's wife did not want the street, the house, the front door to face the street.
John?
Yeah, Mr. Gilmedi.
Yeah, that looks like a Les Holbrook house. Bobby was built by Les Holbrook back in sixty-four. That's one of his units. That's a well-built home. If, if Richard thinks it should be turned the other way, you know, that would work. Not the garage, I mean the upstairs. That would.
Put the breezeway up?
You'd have to turn the existing house.
Yeah.
They could get rid of one window, they could get rid of that one window and make a breezeway up, bring it up in, so it looks like one building.
Yeah.
I mean, is there a way to change the roof line? To make the roof line from front to back?
Yeah, turn it the other way, Richard.
Okay, yeah, then we're saying the same thing then, yeah, I get it.
Yeah, yeah. And it would raise that breezeway and go right through that window. I know it's probably.
Cassisway through that window.
You're saying, put something through this window?
Yeah, when you come up, you can actually put a door there to attach it.
That's right into a bedroom.
Oh.
That's okay, use it as an office. Have it done.
You're saying if it's connected?
Yes.
Are you using an architect?
Well, yeah, I started out using one. I am kind of on a halt right now until we get this hearing done, whether I have to readjust anything or not.
Was this prepared by an architect?
Yes, it was.
Wow. Whoa.
Is that good or bad?
Well, he didn't do a good job, no, I'll be very frank with you.
No, that's fine, I don't mind the honesty. So he could have done something different than?
Oh, absolutely, but he may be just, what you described to him, he may have just simply translated what you were asking for, rather than.
Over the garage.
Yeah.
Well, all right. Are people okay if we close, if people seen it enough, can we ever close that? I just, just easier for me if I can see everybody rather than.
I don't see why you couldn't turn that roof around. You're gonna take out the old one anyways.
Yeah, exactly.
And turn it right around and tie it into the house, now it looks like one.
Yeah, yeah, you got that right.
But it would.
No, you do hot top.
It'd be opposite to the way the existing house is, right?
Right.
But you'd be, you think that would look better?
Uh, look a hundred percent better. Yeah, and it'd make it look like one house.
Yeah.
All right.
So you're saying take this roof?
And turn it.
Flip it?
Yeah, because you're gonna rip it all out anyways, it doesn't, how do you put the roof on?
I'm just trying to understand it, so you're saying just kind of swoop, turn it on its.
Turn it to the right.
Front to back, not side to side.
Right, so the sloping roof of the garage faces the street.
That'll look nice, that'll look really nice.
Well, that's the opposite, though, of the main house, correct?
Correct, yes. You'll see that on a lot of in-laws and, and, and just say expanded estates, that's how they build it, that's how they design it.
No, they may have looked at, there's a house right on Old High, just like a skip over the jump over the house right across the street. It's longer, you know, front to back, but it's the same style house, probably more square footage, same front. The roof is the same. Everything is pretty much the same house, just a larger scale. They did go over there to look at it, so maybe they just took that design and went with that, because they have the exact same in-law over their garage. But I think their garage is like four bays, two and two.
Yeah.
So it's a lot longer, but that's right, you know, just a couple, one house away.
How big's the existing garage now?
Pardon me?
How big's the existing garage now?
It's in here? I don't know the dimensions on it.
Twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-four?
Something like that, I would say.
Like twenty-six, thirty.
That's a big garage, that's good, yeah, I turned that roof around and tied it into the house, so I just.
Yeah, I mean, we're not trying to tell you what to do, we're simply saying that.
Hi, welcome.
But we're giving you some suggestions, as presented tonight. I mean, I'm only one, I'm only one person out of a five-member board. There still may be four, four members that would vote in the affirmative to the proposed plan. But myself, I would go back to, as you said, back to the drawing board, back to your architect and explain to him what, or her, what the board has said to you, and request he makes some modifications to get, to make the drawing, to make the dwelling look like a single family. And if he, you know, he may or may not use some of our suggestions. We think they're pretty good. We've, of probably seventy-five percent of the hearings that we, that we have over the past two years have been in-laws, so we see these a lot, an awful lot.
Okay.
And this is often the issue when there's an addition, you at least are putting an addition on an existing structure. You know, you're raising up above the garage, but nonetheless, the concern is to have it maintain the appearance of a single-family house. One part of that is, don't put another front door on the addition. But the other is just, you know, as Mr. Blas said, when you look at this, it looks like two houses connected by a breezeway. And I guess that's because the roofs are sort of similar, you know.
Even though it's over a garage, it still gives that like two separate houses.
It's, that's, that's how Mr. Blas is looking at it, so. Let me, let me continue on, and we'll see, let's see what we get to. Can people okay if she, Mr. Slavak closes this? So you can, if you hit the thing that says Stop Sharing, there you go, okay. All right, Mr. Gilmedi, I hadn't gotten to you yet for your questions.
I'm usually the last one. Everything is pretty well beat to death by the time it gets to me. Yeah, I would try to make it, turn it, try to make that breezeway. I've done a number of these, and they've, they tie them into the house, they make it look like one. For one time, I do agree with Richard.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Gilmedi?
That's it.
Okay, I just have a couple of more questions. First of all, how many parking spaces do you have? It looks like you've got three or four parking spaces.
At least, probably six.
Right, right, because you've got it, you've got it wide, so that's all gonna stay, so that's plenty. And if it were not your father, do you have another family member in mind that you'd still go ahead and do it? Okay, yeah, I see you nodding your head. Okay.
We have some medical issues here.
Okay, all right, all right.
My son would come up, if not my father, my son would come up and help me.
Okay. All right, all right, let me go out to members of the public. Mr. Manning, I know you're one of the next to neighbors, did you wish to speak on this?
No, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. And, let's see, Ms. Jones, I'm gonna ask you to unmute, and likewise, the the over, Ms. Jones, did you wish to speak on this?
I just had a question about the four feet for the staircase. Would that be on, would it be closer to the property line, or would it be on our property?
Okay, which properties do you own?
Pizza Slice.
Oh, the Slice, okay, so it would, even with the addition, even if they add the four feet, it still would not be within that.
It's ten feet, John.
Ten, it'd be, at that point, it would be ten feet from the pie shape?
Ten, ten feet from the, yeah, from the pie-shaped lot line.
Okay, so it would still not be on that piece, but it would be closer than the existing. Okay, so it would, it would still not be on that piece, but it would be closer than the existing house, obviously.
That's correct.
Okay. Ms. Jones, who also own, wh- what else do you own besides?
I'm a part owner, there's a bunch of us that own that.
The Obert, the old, what's shown on the plan is, is the Obert property, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify that. All right, um, do you have any other questions or comments? Is that, that was your main concern, that they weren't going to go on to that piece?
Correct.
The answer is no, either, either way, they're not gonna go on there. Um, it's just that if, if they had that piece, then they wouldn't have to, they, they'd be, they'd have enough distance to the property line of the, the house next door, the Rmary House. Without that, they're closer to that piece, but not on it.
Okay.
All right, and, uh, Mr. Obert, I see you're unmuted, did you wish to speak?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm fine with, uh, the changes.
Okay. And, uh, I see Sunny Obert is here too, does she wish, wish to speak? Oh, I'll take it as no. Um, okay, uh, sure the comments, members of the board, um. I, I.
John, what do we do? Withdraw without prejudice or?
No, no, we could, we could, you know, if you wanna see a revised plan, we, we can continue the hearing, keep it open. And.
Yeah. I think if, uh, if she tries, when she does go to an architect or whoever's doing this, if she tried to match that, uh, addition with, um, the main house, you know, like a gambrel roof, the, uh, the upstairs being like a gambrel instead of a, um, um, you know, it can be done. Uh, we used to.
That was an option anyways, with, with style roof.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it can be done, I think it'd be done nicely. And, uh, that's how we used to get the, if we had a problem getting the fifth floor in the building, we would make it a gambrel and that would be the roof line at the fourth floor. So we'd get that fifth floor on there. So, anyway, um, it's up to her, it's up to her, I hate to see her have to go back and do all that work, but, um, Richard is right.
I mean, just to be clear, I think everybody in the board is okay with it, other than that issue of, um,
Yeah.
Just.
I, I. I'm okay with that, with the exception of the, uh, the layout.
Yeah, but the, the way the.
Yeah.
The exterior, yeah, so.
Yeah.
You know, the, the idea of, of approving it, uh, is, you know, it's used as an in-law and neighbors don't have an issue, there's one.
No, no, but, yeah, and, and I'm, but I'm not gonna, I would say that would've been every, it would be in everybody's best interest to get that parcel two resolved. Because that's, that is, uh, that's a big deal, hangover, um, hanging over your head, ma'am. Um, not having, not having legal ownership on that.
I mean, in this process, twenty-six years, we thought that was our property.
Yeah.
So, this is.
Adverse possession.
Yeah, well, I don't wanna do that, you know, yes, I understand that, but, and I think that the Oberts are just, you know, hearing things out to see, is, is this, you know, legit and all of that, but, um, you know, I wanted to go that route first and see.
Yeah.
It, it's such a small piece, I don't know, nobody can really do anything with it. It's a little, little pie shape, there's no access from the main road.
No. Who's paying ta- who's paying taxes on it?
I don't think anybody was, but I don't, you know.
No, it's, it's part of our property and, and we are paying taxes on it.
Yeah.
So, right, true.
No, I know the initial plan's an owner unknown. So I don't know, I, I don't know that much about this whole process, so this is my first go-around.
Yeah.
Um, I relied on Kyle to just do some.
Mr. Chairman?
You know, Kyle gave you, he gave you a plan that showed the existing, by the D, so that's what Kyle does. Let me, you know, I just want to explain to everybody, the, uh, I was having a discussion at the beginning of the hearing with Mr. Curran about the zoning relief that would be needed here, so, uh, obviously, you know, it, it needs an in-law, a special permit for the in-law.
Yeah.
Uh, what I was explaining about, um, if, if they put the addition on or put the, the four-foot stretch onto it or not, that the current house, assuming for a moment that they do not own that strip, and I think that's the way we sort of have to assume it as of now. Uh, the existing house is non-conforming because it's already too close to the property line if they don't own that strip. So to put a further four-foot extension onto the garage and what would be the, the second floor, that's extending an existing non-conformity. And the only relief that they need from the board for that is a determination that it's not more, not, it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing house. That's the only zoning relief they would need from us, and I would give that to them as part of this approval, if we're gonna approve it. And that way, if they wanna do it, they can do it, if they don't do it, they don't do it, if they uh, arrange things with the Obert, so it's no longer an issue, then they don't need that permission either, but at least we, we clear it up for them to, to go ahead if that's the, uh.
John. What, John?
Go ahead, go ahead, John.
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, I haven't heard the word, uh, adverse possession.
It was mentioned, but you know, it's like not our.
Oh, you said it.
It's not our.
I'm not listening.
Yeah, but, but John, what about, should we consider giving a var- a side setback or a side, a variance on the side setback?
They don't need a variance.
Well, just the.
Need a determination.
Just the, the fact that it's already too close and they don't, and it was post, um, zoning and it was bu- built post-zoning, it's non-conforming, I mean, I, I, they, couldn't somebody actually make a case to tell them to cut a piece of the garage off?
Uh, I don't know, Mr. Curran, I, I, I'd rather just make the determination.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to help the applicant, and if I just thought if we gave him a variance for that side setback, that would ease any future legal issues.
Yeah, um. Uh, but I'll leave that open for, for the moment, um.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Curran, do you have anything further to say? Otherwise, my suggestion was gonna be that we continue the hearing. Uh, Lawbacka get, uh, you know, a different plan, you know, it, just for the exterior, we don't even need, you know, for our purposes, so much the interior. And that way, we keep it open, you don't have to re-advertise and so forth, we just continue this for another month or so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation is that you keep, you continue the hearing. Um, I will talk to the architect and explain exactly what this board is looking for. And I think before you continue it, you ought to just have the board put it, have an input, whether or not they'd be willing to allow the determination to go to ten feet from the property line. That, that way, the owner of three thirty High Street will not have to acquire that additional property.
Yeah, I, so just kind of as, uh, you ju- just want a sense of the board, whether they, would the board approve a determination to allow the four-foot addition. Uh, this is not, you know, not a formal vote, but I think we wanna just get a sense of the board, so before she goes back to the architect, we, everybody knows where the board is standing on that, is, is that agreeable to everybody in the board to have a determination? Mr. Keeman, I see you nodding your head.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Cacciatore, be okay, Mr. Blas?
Yeah, I know, no objection.
Yeah, Mr. Gilman, you're okay, yeah, so we're all okay with, we would give a determination because it, it doesn't, uh, it, it's really, it doesn't really, you know, it's no worse than the existing house, that's basically what.
So from here, just, you can just set a continuation date, and I will talk to the architect, all he needs is elevation drawings.
Okay, so we are already planning on having a meeting on, Carol, is it January thirteenth, was that the date that we selected? Is that right?
No, I think it's the eleventh.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong year. The eleven, Monday, I, I have my two calendars on the wall there. Uh, Monday, the eleventh, so that's like five weeks away. So, I, I suggest we schedule it for that, if there's some reason. You know, if you go at that time, we'll just continue it again.
Exactly where he's from, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do anything this winter at this.
Right, right, but this way, we don't have to re-advertise and reapply, we're just keeping the hearing open and continuing it.
So you're saying you need a new elevation, but in order for this to go, it has to be connected to the main house?
Joanne, if you call, I, I'm Bob Curran, the Building Commissioner, if you call my office tomorrow, I'll explain all that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, I, I think the board wants to see the roof line of the garage addition.
Yeah, I'll call Bob.
Turned around, and, and that will make it look more like a single-family house, and I think that's what the board wants to see, and frankly, I think it will look better, better anyway. Uh, you'll have, you already have the garage facing the street, you know? Unlike the main house. Um, all right, so we have a case scheduled at seven on January eleventh, so we could make this at seven-thirty. Um, Carol, does that seem right?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so for the, the neighbors, to the extent that you, uh, want to participate in that next hearing, you, you will not get another letter in the mail, um, since you're here. Uh, this is how you'll know about it, so go and entertain a motion to continue this case to Monday, January eleventh at seven-thirty PM.
So moved.
Okay, moved by, I'm sorry, Mr. Blas?
Yes.
There is a second?
Second.
By Mr. Cacciatore, I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Blas?
Yes.
Mr. Cacciatore?
Yes.
Mr. Gilman?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
And myself, John Gold Rosen, yes, so we'll, uh, continue this till the eleventh, January eleventh at seven-thirty, and, uh, Mr. Manning, Ms. Jones, and, uh, the Oberts, if you wish to participate or this has answered your questions, then, uh, that's fine, but if you wish to participate, you'll please call in, we'll, um, we'll have to post a new meeting, there'll be a new meeting notice posted for that, so you'll need to again, go on the Whitman website to the remote hearings page, it isn't up there yet, I plan to have it up within a week or so. So you'll, it'll be, it'll be a new identification number, you won't be able to use the one for this meeting, there'll be a new meeting. Okay, thank you for participating, thank you, Ms. Lawbacka.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, members of the board, we do have some minutes to, uh, take care of as well. Um, sure, I've got them here. So this is the minutes for case number thirteen. Fourteen May Flowers Tackle, this was a special permit for an in-law apartment. And, let's see, there was myself, Mr. Blas, Mr. Cacciatore, and Mr. Keeman were on this one. I did, uh, send these out by email.
Yeah.
So you're a motion?
This is, um, case.
I don't have, uh, any paperwork. Case number thirteen?
Yeah, I sent this out in a separate email.
Yeah.
Um, you trust us on it?
Yeah, um, um, move to approve, um, minutes for case number thirteen.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Steve, are you okay with us going ahead and approving?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, yes.
All right, all right, let me take a roll call vote, Mr. Blas?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Cacciatore?
Yes.
And myself, John Gold Rosen, yes. And for case number fourteen, which was for the, uh, Middle East Restaurant Building, the site plan approval for that, uh, same same people, uh, were involved in that one.
That Mr. Rosen's place?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, okay, I'm sorry, a motion, who's making the motion?
I made the motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Keeman made the motion, the second?
So moved, or second?
Second by Mr. Blas. Uh, Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Blas?
Yes.
Mr. Cacciatore?
Yes.
And myself, John Gold Rosen, yes. And then we have the general minutes for that meeting. Um, again, same, same people were present for that one.
I can't. I don't have any paperwork again, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct, um, a move to approve the general minutes.
All right. Uh, second?
Second.
Okay, uh, I'll take a roll call, Mr. Blas?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Cacciatore?
Yes.
And myself, John Gold Rosen, yes. All right, that, uh, I think that concludes things, so on January eleventh, we have one new case at seven and the continuation at seven-thirty. And that's it for now, so.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy Monica.
Happy holidays to all.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Call me tomorrow, Fred.
And for now.
Yeah, I'll call you, I'll call you, um, either when I get home tonight or.
Don't call me tonight, call me tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
Fred, you'll forget.
Oh, yeah, I'll forget.
And just again, that, that meeting.
Boy, what a reputation.
The, uh, that meeting will have to be a Zoom meeting as of now.
We could do it at a town hall, let's do it at a town hall.
Uh, well, we need the, uh.
The big, the big hall.
And, and, I mean, Carol, have you already sent out the, uh, have we started the advertising yet for the new case?
It goes in in two weeks.
Okay. Well, I mean, there's time, but frankly, the way, the way things are headed, towns that, uh, have had town hall opened have reclosed their town halls, so things are not going in the right direction, so. I think we better plan it one more time.